Yeah. Here I eat.
My daughter's in the tiebreaker right now at the tennis match.
You'll turn in.
He jumps out of his chair and cheers.
Did y'all play Far City? Did she play Rennie Luth?
Far City. What's her name?
Uh, Rennie Luth. Rennie Luth.
Far City?
Far City.
Oh, Far City.
Gastonian.
Uh, no, it's weird because Highland Texas Gastonian. We play East Gaston.
Evening, June. How are you?
Hello. How you doing?
I guess just, yeah.
But she was playing her last match last week. It felt very good. The best she's played in the conference. Don't roll over the net and it clipped the nose. Just in there. Swept her back. So she's good. Yeah. Carolyn Kyler, they did that raises it up.
This is something that Councilman Murray wanted to make go over tonight. Hi, how are you?
Hey, how are you? Hey. That's not even good.
Hi, Mom. I didn't say you walk in.
I slid in. Are you here? Are you doing all right?
Good. How about you?
Well, I'm here. I'm happy that it's a little bit cooler weather today. It'll be cooler weather maybe before the end of the week.
Yeah.
You never know. But everything's good. Is that house behind you, is it under contract now? Or is it? I saw you talking to somebody.
Yeah, it's pinned in.
Okay.
Jody Ledbetter's trying to buy it.
Okay.
Do you know he? He might be past your age.
He is, yeah. He's probably either younger than us. Same age as I was.
Yeah, he told us when he graduated, but I can't remember.
Him and his wife, he's a one. That same loop through our neighborhood.
Yeah, they told us that. They said we walk through here. Uh, she's a buyer. She was a buyer.
Okay.
I mean.
I guess the big thing is, is it still in bad shape?
Blood on the house.
So I mean, at one time, it sort of worried.
Well, they cleaned it, put a roof on it, put a new heat pump in. I think he put all the appliances in it.
Yeah, okay.
He didn't do anything to the inside like paint or anything, but there's no, there's no damage.
I was just worried about that roof because I know he didn't do anything to the.
Oh, no. Well, yeah, he had to put a new roof on it.
Where everything outside was just.
Yeah, had to put a new garage door on.
All natural.
Yeah, the whole back, yeah. He, Jody had somebody come over there. We had more than one person, but he had, he got estimates on cleaning up that back.
Those, uh, the trees, the cypress, whatever, were they yours or they on that tree?
Well, according, according to Maria, the people that owned the house before we bought it paying them.
Okay.
But they're right on the line, so.
I'm curious because I've got some red tips on the back of mine like that. I've cut most of them and neighbor was happy they could.
Yeah.
They were just a problem.
He asked me that same question. I said, well, I think when you get it surveyed, you're gonna find out it's, they've grown so much, it's probably half an inch.
But that's good if that, I mean, if, are they wanting to resell it or they gonna move in with?
No, they're gonna move there.
Okay.
He said, one of them's, Dottie is buying their house.
Okay.
And they're gonna, if that goes through, they're gonna buy this house.
Good deal.
So I guess they made an offer contingent on that.
Yeah. Well, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know him, but I knew him. We recognized him when we saw him, you know, and then we talked to him, so yeah. I think it'll be fine.
Yeah, he's always, he grew up here in the greater Bulling Springs community. I don't know if he lived down toward Number One or something.
He did. We asked him because we thought he might be a, he's not in that crowd. He's off, he knows the McCraws over at Number One. That side, yeah, yeah. But Ken thought she probably killed him, but she's not.
None of Ledgivers, none of Thomas's, I mean, all the different families. We don't, we don't know nobody. Somewhere we gotta be. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't claim my family neither, Daniel, but.
If you know Brenda Williams, you know, you know who Brenda Williams is?
Oh, I do, yeah.
They're all related. She's traced it all back. She'll tell you what we share. Six-four in the tiebreaker and we're playing to seven, so we got mash, double mash play.
Awesome.
Sorry, my daughter's playing right now.
All right. Is it singles or doubles?
Doubles is where they'll go to the conference tournament. Hopefully about to be six and one in doubles in conference.
I told, I told you the game the other night, you need to, you need to bring back one of Larry McIntyre's favorite sayings.
Open the taxi ride?
Open the taxi ride.
I've only said it one time since, since he passed. I've only said it one time and I gave him credit, but I don't wanna, but I did do it once.
I think about that about this week, week four, sitting in front of your mom and you. One time I said.
And we won.
It's back McIntyre, that's time for four.
All right. Change it to Uber or Lyft now instead of taxi. Make it, make it his own. Good crowd here tonight. This should be a rezoning night.
Uh, yeah.
October, October.
Just barely.
Finally gonna feel like fall this weekend, it looks like.
You might have to tiebreak tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, man. I didn't think about that. Let's hope I don't have a secret motion to vacate like they did this year.
Oh, no. That's a mess.
On the other hand, maybe we could.
You can't keep, be kicked out of something you will on the.
That's right. That's right. Hello, we call the, uh, October Town of Bulling Springs Town Council meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Our first item is to adopt the agenda.
I have two questions.
Okay.
We received a handout from Dana on the Foothills Regional Commission Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Mouthful. Is there, I know it's on the agenda, is there a preferred location in the agenda that you want to present?
It can just be in the Managers Report.
Okay, perfect. And my other, my other item in the consent agenda was the planning board appointments. A little more curious on how that is established and any public notifications that went out calling for an opportunity. I know of at least one person that has approached me in the last month. I don't know if that transition was lost or the information was lost in Justin's transition or not. So I don't know if we want to pull that out or if it's a simple response and we can move on. Do we need to pull it out to have an additional discussion? Okay.
Right.
Our motion, the agenda as presented with the planning board appointments as a separate item and later in, let's see, what section should that be in?
You can do it right before the public hearing.
Okay.
Just right after the consent agenda? If that, that's okay?
That's fine with me, yes.
Second. Okay. So, motion and a second to adopt the agenda with the amendment of pulling the planning board appointments out and placing them in regular business. Any further discussion? If not, all those, well, I guess we're, you can vote electronically.
Whatever we get used to.
All right, and the amended agenda has been adopted. Are any citizens present that would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, please. Switch, come forward.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I should've, I should've called Mr. Saldo and, and put myself on.
That's okay.
It's time for my report for y'all. So, one thing that I'm very proud of, the first handout you've got, we did reach out to YUSA and they pulled the report about town residents' memberships for us. So, it's got the populations, 4,057, and out of that, 975 are members, which is a rate of 20, 21.3 percent. And then there's a actual map on the, on the backside. The only thing is they, they're telling me the same things that I was running into. If it's got a post office box, if we've put it in its post office box, we're not gonna be able to track it. So what we're gonna try to do in the future is put their physical address and then have a mailing address for them, so, so we can track it better. And then I've got a report for you on the backside of that. And I'm not going over the whole thing since I'm not on the agenda and y'all can read it, but, but I will tell you, fall sports, Jordan pulled these numbers for me. In volleyball, we've got 57 signed up for fall and 35 of those are town residents. Soccer, we've got 92 signed up with 52 town residents. Baseball, we've got 100 with 57 town residents. So we've got 249 total in fall sports. Fall sports is not as normally, it's not as popular as spring sports because they do play school sports as well. So we're really proud of those numbers. And it's actually increased by 11, 11.66 percent, so that's, that's really good. On scholarships, I'm gonna ask if I can get a report like this one for whenever I come back and report in January to see about scholarships, fall sports and, I mean, yeah, sports and scholarships where we fall in the, in the town residents with YUSA pulling those reports for us. I'm really excited. We're still waiting to get certified for our new food program, but Goldsboro YMCA is sponsoring us, which means it allows us to go ahead and start serving our kids in after school. So we're actually able to serve them super snacks, which got, has got the five components that North Carolina or the government, whatever, deems that the children should have daily, so we're able to give that. Then I've got a picture in there for you, the second grade swim. We was actually able to do three weeks at Ruby before the pool got too cold. So we had 90 kids from Bulling Springs School that we, that we did second grade swim for, and Jada did an awesome job. And it equaled $3,600 in scholarship, where we scholarshiped the whole thing. Then upcoming events, we've got Oktoberfest at Garden Web, the 26th of October. And, uh, so it would be the town, Garden Web, and the YMCA once again putting this on for our community. And then I've got the different things in there that we're gonna be doing. I did want to mention as far as music on main, if you ever need us, feel free to reach out to let us know what we can do, and I'll pay staff to come and help during those events. And then I've got you a flyer in there for the Oktoberfest, if you don't mind maybe putting them out somewhere. And then I was gonna let you see, uh, we got this approved, so, but I don't know if y'all was able to see it. It's the, uh, our logo this year has got the, actually it's got the turkey running through the town, the town logo. So, um, and that's what we're hoping to be able to put on our shirts, too. I've got somebody working on it, but, but I just thought it was a good representation of the turkey trot and that, you know, if it wasn't for the town of Bulling Springs, we couldn't pull it off, so, and Garden Web, so. But do you have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Okay.
The 975 that's, that you say are live in Bulling Springs, are those people who are getting the discount that they call? Or is that just people who are members?
They're either getting a discount, the town resident discount, or a discount where they work, or a veteran discount.
They're not, that's not necessarily 975 who are receiving the, the town discount.
Right. It's just that there's 975 town residents that's members of the Y.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But they, they might be getting a discount through where they work, or military or anything like that, so. And that's why it's so hard to, for me to get you those numbers, so I'm excited that YUSA was able to pull this for me. And, and in the future, I can, think I can track better numbers for y'all and give you a better report.
Okay. I think this is good progress.
All right.
And that map density really paints the picture well, so.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was real excited about that. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Anyone else have to speak now or public comment? All right, Mr. Edwards, Garden Web, university update.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Couple updates here for you. Brinkley Amphitheater, you may have heard of it. Construction is almost done now if we can just have a little bit of rain to help the grass grow over there. First concert, October 28, Ricky Skaggs in Kentucky, Thunder. We have 800 tickets for sale. We are at 7:17 with almost a month to go, so I'm very excited about that. If you haven't gotten your ticket yet, I can't promise we can hold one, so make sure you check that out. Opening act for that, you may have heard, is actually a Garden Web student. She's listed on Spotify and all that kind of stuff, too, so a great opportunity for our students there. That same weekend is homecoming. Things ranging from baseball, golf tournaments, Bo's Battle Coup, it's brand new. If you can light up a smoker and cook some pork butts, come on out and support us. Some folks in the crowd, I think, are gonna sign up as well, I hope. And so Hall of Fame Gala Friday night, Homecoming Parade at noon, football game against UT Martin at 1:30. Events going on all weekend. It's, it's homecoming, ladies and gentlemen. Couple points of pride, last week, we hosted a remote area medical clinic, actually over in Shelby, with the community center now located in the, I believe it was North Shelby School over there. And we were able to serve more than 50 individuals with free healthcare, healthcare provision and dental care. Really excited about that opportunity to serve the community. Another point of pride, we broke around on our newest facility, Soccer Field House. So for those that know campus, in the curve of Stadium Drive, just across from the Hammock Field House, we'll be placing another facility there, serving both our men's and women's soccer team. Other updates, football is this weekend. Come on out, just as an FYI, if you haven't seen, the game got bumped forward to four o'clock. Originally, I believe that was at six. Season tickets have gone on sale for men's and women's basketball. Two more things and I'll get out of the way. Food services on campus are open to the public, so I want to continue folks, to encourage folks to come out. This is another resource for the town, be it Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, choose your cult, whichever one you support. And the last thing I have, the Dover Library is hosting Don Sudders on October 26 for ghost stories, folk tales, and true crime at 7:00 PM, so staying in the spirit of Halloween there. That's at Dover Library. It is $10 for the public to join, so make sure you get your tickets ahead of time for that. But with that, that's all I got for tonight. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
All right, next up is the consent agenda, of course, minus the planning board appointments. If council has had a chance to review, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Green. Any further discussion? You may cast your vote.
While I cast my vote, I would like to say, uh, very happy to, for the, uh, Ms., uh, well, I can't do two things at once, I'm a little ambidextrous. The assistant town clerk, position there to, Tracy, I think she's doing us a super job. Happy, happy to see that, that a former. With that, I'll look.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted and well deserved, for sure. All right, next item in regular business then? Well, yeah, let's, that's where we said we were gonna put the.
Correct.
Planning board appointments. So we'll discuss the planning board appointments. I didn't, do you find what page that's on?
Uh, it is on page five of the overall.
Okay.
Packet. There's a paragraph there. I think Noah's gonna read a little bit about to us.
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The included ordinance and resolution rearranges the planning board and the current members. So in the original creation of the Planning and Zoning Board, it established nine members, five within the town limits, four from the ETJ. Over the last several years, that's been consistently seven. No cap by staff, just as people come on and off, we've never reached that non-limit. That nine size is pretty large for a town our size, and nine members wouldn't fit on the dice, so it's pretty large. So staff has recommended bringing that down to seven, six of those being in-town limits, one in the ETJ. Staff has, over time, solicited new members via the newsletter, on social media, and other means, so we haven't received many applicants over time, at least in my time here. The resolution does appoint a new member, Fred DeBaile, who has expressed interest the last few years in serving. The resolution also establishes specific seats, so we can keep better track of the terms of those members, so everybody's not expiring at one time. So the resolution just kind of better organizes the planning board and establishes those terms.
So you answered my question about socializing the opportunity to join. What are the term limits again on the planning board?
So they're three-year terms.
And they're rotating?
That's right.
Okay.
And a member can be reappointed after those three years if council deems necessary.
No time off or anything?
That's right. And there is a current vacancy for in-town limits, so if you know of anybody that.
My person was an ETJ person.
Right. So we'll certainly keep those vacancies aware to the public and solicit those opportunities.
Sure. I appreciate the clarity.
Thanks, sir.
So council could present an ETJ person, like Mr. Edwards could say, I have a person I want to nominate, without that person formally filling out an application?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know if that was.
But the current vacancy is for in-town residents.
It is.
Okay.
And so either way, the application's on our website, under the planning board site, or, you know, certainly if y'all have someone, bring that to our attention and we'll certainly get them on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve that particular item? Okay.
I will, motion to approve the planning board appointments as presented.
All right, Councilman Edwards, with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Councilman Thomas, any further discussion? If not, you can cast your votes. All right, that carries. Next item is a public hearing for a rezoning, a zoning map amendment. So we'll open the public hearing at 6:45. And staff report followed by a public comment.
Good evening. I always like to kick these off. So you've got before you a zoning map amendment, which used to just be called rezonings, but now we got all fancy and the statute says we have to call them zoning map amendments. And that is for 436th East Cottage. This is the property that was annexed at last month's town council meeting. This one is a little bit different, so as you see on here, the requested action is a motion to approve the zoning map amendment for those parcels from R-15 to a new R-10C conditional, and then with the three parcels from R-20 to R-10C conditional. The reason that we are doing that is that there is a developer who's interested in a higher-density development than our zoning code allows. And so if you flip to page, so you've got the application, which is on 38 and 39. You've got the same map that you all have last month on 40, 41, and 42. 43, you've got a letter of approval from interim planning board chairman, Alan McWhiter. And then on 44, you've got what's called the conditional zoning document with the terms. And so it says there are terms of agreement, the conditional, every conditional district has its own rules. And so this conditional district will only apply to the area highlighted on that map and those parcels. And so because we don't have a high-density development zoning district, there is no general rule for that in Bulling Springs. And so every time we get a high-density development or someone who wants to petition you all for that right, we have to build them by hand. And so that's what this says. So it says, "The conditional district has established a limit development to only single-family detached homes. Any development will be required to tap into existing town on sewer and water. They have to have curb, gutter, and sidewalks as outlined in town article 9.4, or town ordinance article 9.4. Any development which adds streets must be in compliance with article 9.4. When the development is completed, the town expects all streets to be publicly dedicated. The developer has agreed to place a connector path between the developed property and the Ruby Seehunt YMCA, subject to all easements and instruments as necessary. The developer will provide an easement to the town for greenway connectivity. The developer will provide a dedicated community amenity gathering space, and then we have to build the island setbacks for that district as well, so those setbacks would be 10, 5, 10, and 10." This was approved by the planning board. I have also already signed off on it preliminarily and met with Mike from Public Works. He also signed off on it. Are there any questions about this development?
For that, you may have heard is actually a Gardner Webb student. She's listed on Spotify and all that kind of stuff, too. So, a great opportunity for our students there. That same weekend is homecoming. Things ranging from baseball golf tournaments, Bo's Battle Coup, it's brand new. If you can light up a smoker and cook some pork butts, come on out and support us. Some folks in the crowd, I think, are gonna sign up as well, I hope. And so, Hall of Fame Gala Friday night, homecoming parade at noon, football game against UT Martin at 1:30. Events going on all weekend. It's homecoming, ladies and gentlemen. A couple of points of pride. Last week, we hosted a remote area medical clinic, actually over in Shelby, with the community center now located in the, I believe it was North Shelby School over there. And we were able to serve more than 50 individuals with free healthcare, healthcare provision, and dental care. Really excited about that opportunity to serve the community. Another point of pride, we broke ground on our newest facility, soccer field house. So, for those that know campus, in the curve of stadium drive, just across from the Hammock Fieldhouse, we'll be placing another facility there, serving both our men's and women's soccer team. Other updates, football is this weekend. Come on out, just as an FYI, if you haven't seen, the game got bumped forward to four o'clock. Originally, I believe that was at six. Season tickets have gone on sale for men's and women's basketball. Two more things and I'll get out of the way. Food services on campus are open to the public, so I want to continue folks to encourage folks to come out. This is another resource for the town, be it Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, choose your cult, whichever one you support. And the last thing I have, the Dover Library is hosting Don Sudders on October 26 for ghost stories, folktales, and true crime at 7:00 PM. So, staying in the spirit of Halloween there. That's at Dover Library. It is $10 for the public to join, so make sure you get your tickets ahead of time for that. With that, that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
All right, next up is the consent agenda, of course, minus the planning board appointments. If council has had a chance to review, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Green. Any further discussion? You may cast your vote.
While I cast my vote, I would like to say, very happy to, for the, Ms., well, I can't do two things at once, I'm a little bit douches. The assistant town clerk positioned there to Tracy, I think she's doing us a super job. Happy to see that, that a former. With that, I will.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted and well deserved, for sure. All right, next item in related business then. Well, yeah, that's where we said we were gonna put the planning board appointments. So, we'll discuss the planning board appointments. I didn't, did you find what page that's on?
It is on page five of the overall.
Okay.
Packet. There's a paragraph there, and I think Noah's gonna read a little bit about to us.
I will.
If you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The included ordinance and resolution rearranges the planning board and the current members. So, in the original creation of the planning and zoning board, it established nine members, five within the town limits, four from the ETJ. Over the last several years, that's been consistently seven. No cap by staff, just as people come on and off, we've never reached that non-limit. That nine size is pretty large for a town our size, and nine members wouldn't fit on the dice, so it's pretty large. So, staff has recommended bringing that down to seven, six of those being in-town limits, one in the ETJ. Staff has, over time, solicited new members via the newsletter, on social media, and other means, so we haven't received many applicants over time, at least in my time here. The resolution does appoint a new member, Fred DeBaile, who has expressed interest the last few years in serving. The resolution also establishes specific seats, so we can keep better track of the terms of those members, so everybody's not expiring at one time. So, the resolution just kinda better organizes the planning board and establishes those terms.
So, you answered my question about socializing the opportunity to join. What are the term limits, again, on the planning board?
So, they're three-year terms.
And they're rotating?
That's right.
Okay.
And a member can be reappointed after those three years, if council deems necessary.
No time off or anything?
That's right.
Okay.
And there is a current vacancy for in-town limits, so if you know of anybody that...
My person was an ETJ person.
Right.
So...
So, we'll certainly keep those vacancies aware to the public and solicit those opportunities.
Sure. I appreciate the clarity.
Thanks, sir.
So, council could present an ETJ person, like Mr. Edwards could say, "I have a person I want to nominate," without that person formally filling out an application?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know if that was...
But the current vacancy is for in-town residents?
It is.
Okay.
And so, either way, the application's on our website, under the planning board site, or certainly if y'all have someone, bring that to our attention, and we'll certainly get them on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve that particular item? Okay.
I will. Motion to approve the planning board appointments as presented.
All right, Councilman Edwards, with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Councilman Thomas, any further discussion? If not, you can cast your votes. Next item is a public hearing for a rezoning, a zoning map amendment. So, we'll open the public hearing at 6:45, and staff report followed by a public comment.
Good evening. I always like to kick these off. So, you've got before you a zoning map amendment, which used to just be called rezonings, but now we got all fancy, and the statute says we have to call them zoning map amendments. And that is for 436th East College. This is the property that was annexed at last month's town council meeting. This one is a little bit different. So, as you see on here, the requested action is a motion to approve the zoning map amendment for those parcels from R-15 to a new R-10C conditional, and then with the three parcels from R-20 to R-10C conditional. The reason that we are doing that is that there is a developer who's interested in a higher-density development than our zoning code allows. And so, if you flip to page, so you've got the application, which is on 38 and 39, you've got the same map that you all have last month on 40, 41, and 42, 43. You've got a letter of approval from interim planning board chairman, Alan McWhiter. And then on 44, you've got what's called the conditional zoning document with the terms. And so, it says their terms of agreement, the conditional, every conditional district has its own rules. And so, this conditional district will only apply to the area highlighted on that map and those parcels. And so, because we don't have a high-density development zoning district, there is no general rule for that in Bulling Springs. And so, every time we get a high-density development, or someone who wants to petition you all for that right, we have to build them by hand. And so, that's what this says. So, it says, "The conditional district has established a limit development to only single-family detached homes. Any development will be required to tap into existing town on sewer and water. They have to have curb, gutter, and sidewalks, as outlined in TMA article 9.4, or TMA ordinance article 9.4. Any development which adds streets must be in compliance with article 9.4. When the development is completed, the town expects all streets to be publicly dedicated. The developer has agreed to place a connector path between the developed property and the Ruby Sea Hunt YMCA, subject to all easements and instruments as necessary. The developer will provide an easement to the town for greenway connectivity. The developer will provide a dedicated community amenity gathering space." And then we have to build the island setbacks for that district as well. So, those setbacks would be 10, 5, 10, and 10. This was approved by the planning board. I have also already signed off on it preliminarily, and met with Mike from Public Works. He also signed off on it. Are there any questions about this development?
What does streets being publicly dedicated mean?
The town will maintain them.
Okay.
Yep. So, rather than it being a private drive that, after 20 years, falls into disrepair, we will file it on our power bill filings.
Thank you.
And so, we will maintain that street.
Does system development phase apply to this that we just passed?
I do.
Yes.
Okay. Well, when I look at R-10 and R-10C, the conditions, the only big thing that stands out to me is the rear setback change from 20 to 10. The other setbacks seem to be pretty much the same.
They are. And also, because it's a conditional district, we can, the statute allows us to apply any reasonable standard to the development of the property. And so, all of those bullets, instead of being suggestions, when passed by council, they are required of the developer. So, it allows us to mandate that as part of the development.
But are those minimums?
Mm-hmm.
They're minimums, so they could be more in certain spots.
Yep. But those are the minimums.
Those are the minimums.
Yes. And we're not approving a site plan yet, so we don't have that yet. That's not, that's something that we would do in subsequent months. Whenever the developer has that site plan prepared, they would go through the normal subdivision process, or it would go through the planning board. We would convene the technical review committee, which is made up of six administrative officials, the fire marshal, police chief, me, the interim manager, Mike from Public Works, and we would all get to, and then our town engineer, David Odom. We would get together and look at it and evaluate it for things like stormwater control, how many fire hydrants they would need, all that kind of stuff. And then it would go to planning board, and then back to you guys for final approval.
Thank you.
We have control over the road connectivity. I mean, because part of our problem has been in the past is cul-de-sac type situations. And so, basically, it makes for you one way in, one way out. It's hard for garbage trucks, fire trucks, those type of things to navigate that.
Yes. And, oh, I'm sorry.
So, I would hope that, you know, as you're looking at where the hotel is versus Lyman Street, that could be a bigger picture of some road connectivity. And I don't know how that would affect that traffic pattern there on these colleges, anyway. But we would have a little bit of control over that.
Yes. So, I met with eight people from Lyman Street who were concerned about the increased traffic flow, if there were to be, and I'm just throwing out 50 homes built back there, I don't know how many there would potentially be, but if they were to put 50 homes, that would really put a lot of pressure on Lyman Street. So, we're gonna look at that when we're moving forward with the actual subdivision application and where that road goes. There are some DOT standards that allow us to work with developers in requiring primary and secondary areas of ingress and egress.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions before?
To be clear, this is a different developer than, I think it was a year ago, that wanted to buy some land and was gonna put apartments on edge of town?
Yeah, this is a different place.
Okay. I know it's a different location, I just didn't know if it was a different developer.
I'm not sure who the other one was.
Trying to recall.
It was just past Humphreys Auto.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. It is a different person, 'cause I know who that is. Yes.
I guess what I'm wrong with this is, yeah, we're making all these zoning changes, and we have a couple zones that aren't being used.
Yes.
As intended.
We do, we have some underutilized zoning, some pieces of property that are underutilized. And we are, I say we, the planning staff is working quickly to try to resolve some of those, so we've, I've reached out to a couple of developers who you've all met with in the past, to see what their plans are and intentions are for developing other parcels.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, anything else from me?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker. We'll move to a time for a public comment, if there's anyone who would like to address the council on this zoning map amendment issue. Please come forward.
We're continuing all our access to this area other than Lyman Street. Lyman Street is very narrow. It's very difficult for two cars to even attach. We live on Lyman Street, and I'm concerned about the traffic.
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Parker was indicating that there would be additional ins and outs, road developments, so that all that pressure isn't put on Lyman Street, that when the subdivision application is, gets underway, that that will be looked at and will be a priority.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Thank you all for your time. My name is Todd Dupina. I represent the Weeks Development Group as the managing principal. I apologize, I only have one copy that I can show to the council, but this is our most recent working plan, and it'll probably be the final plan, depending on any requirements from engineering or DOT. But we have anticipated future connectivity to the, I guess would be the west. We do have an access that's located on East College to minimize traffic on Lyman as much as possible. And then what we really tried to do was focus on creating a very family-centric neighborhood. It's very walkable. We intend to put sidewalks on one side of the street. We want the greenway connectivity. We want the connectivity to the Y, and then also kind of a center gathering place for the community gather. And what I think about is a young community, it's someplace to have a kid's birthday party, you know, a two- or three-year-old birthday party with a, maybe an open-air pavilion and a playground. The high density that I think a lot of people get concerned about, we are at under 3.7 units per acre. So, in terms of high density, it's not a multifamily eight or nine. I think altogether, right now, that working plan has about 81 units on it. So, it's, as I said, we're trying to responsibly use the property to make sure that we benefit the community, and we've tried to anticipate any of the future growth that may come along and make sure that we've planned for that as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much for your time.
I have one, I have one question, sir, before we do. That change in setback on the rear, what is the purpose behind that? Is that, is that like a patio home design? Is that the reasoning?
It's not intended. What we wanted to do was just make sure that we planned for our potential homeowners to have as much flexibility as possible. Sometimes a shed, if they want to put that back there, would be, have to be within setbacks, and that could really creep it up in the house. The intention is not to have a full-decked house within the setback.
Okay.
It's really for usability. You know, a lot of people now, if they do a pool, or they want to do a shade structure, that all has to fall within a setback, because it's got vertical elements.
I did pay my neighbor.
Thank you, everyone, sir.
Does that make it?
Yeah. Anyone else for public comment? All right, if not, we will close the public hearing at 6:57. Comments, questions from council?
I would hope that the gentleman that just showed us that map could maybe show that to the homeowners over there, too, to sort of give them an idea of, you know, sort of have a dialogue and a communication with them to sort of what's gonna possibly be in the future. I think that would help ease their mind about the process. If you can do that, I can't direct you, but if you could maybe do that, that'd be wonderful.
If not, is there a motion to approve the zoning map amendment?
So moved.
Councilman Green, with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Any further discussion on the issue? If not, you may cast your vote. And that zoning map amendment is adopted. Thank you, everybody. Next item is a memorandum of understanding for a hotel feasibility study. Mr. Parker?
All right, so I made a little bit of, I got the, why are y'all laughing? I received the, some edits today at about 2:15 from Mr. Stirk from Gardner Webb, and so I have got those for you, and I'm just gonna pass them out. They were not substantive edits, they're things like listing the actual price that each entity's gonna pay, making sure that we are sharing information between the town and the university, and putting all that in the agreement. But I did want to print that off for you all, so that you would have a copy, 'cause this is the most up-to-date version of that MOU.
Trying to take my packet.
So, I'll walk you through it, if that's all right. It's a standard MOU, starting with responsibilities of each party. We wanted to make sure that we added in the cost of the training at $15,000. The town's contribution to that would be $3,000 attached to this. Ms. Allen has drafted a budget amendment to take that $3,000 out of fund balance. Then the Bulling Springs TDA will contribute $3,000, the university will contribute $3,000, the county is gonna contribute $6,000, which is $3,000 from the county, and then $3,000 from Cleveland County Economic Development Partnership. And then you see there under miscellaneous, the MOU may be terminated by any party with 10 days' written notice, and then an information sharing agreement where the town is gonna make sure that the firm's engaged with us as a town, but also with the county and the university. And then it, on that second page follows with, it shares with the county and university all research, analysis materials, or any other information. As a preemptive step, to make sure that we had properly engaged Gardner Webb with this, I've already identified who the point of contact will be over there, so that we already know who, over there, we would be speaking with, and it is their CFO. And then we struck the word non-binding.
Questions or comments from council? If not, is there a motion to approve the hotel feasibility study MOU?
So moved. That's presented by the amended version.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Green. Any further discussion? All right, you may cast your vote. All right, that carries unanimously. Next up are a couple of discussion items. First, a nice grant that we received. Mr. Parker, you want to?
Yes. So, you all have in front of you a notice of direct grant to the state. I believe you were alerted by email, but we wanted to make sure we got it in the public record. I'm not gonna read the summary, because it's pretty technical, but in summation, we received $750,000 in the state budget. That is as a direct grant, so it's not attached to or tasked with any project. That's discretionary funds that the state has given us, that we can, you all are able to allocate at your discretion. I've also attached a portion of the state budget where you can see that, so it says provides direct grant. Also wanted, just as a point of information, to make sure everyone noticed that the Bulling Springs Fire and Rescue received $1.25 million in that budget. And that's all that I have for that.
So, basically, $2 million is coming to the town of Bulling Springs in general terms.
Yep.
Not necessarily does, but into this community.
Yes.
State budget.
Yes. And all of those funds are discretionary, so we have maximum flexibility.
That's wonderful news.
Sorry.
I just want to say, I appreciate everybody that participated in lobbying the state for that.
Absolutely.
That's a big win for the town, and it's been very welcome.
I echo that.
Are we, do we need to discuss? Would we need to discuss what we want to do with it yet? Anything like that? Just put it in our back pocket?
Yes. Rhonda will happily set it forth. Yes. Rhonda will happily put that in the bank account.
I mean, we, we...
We got projects.
We got projects.
We got projects.
We're funded, but now could be funded, like the traffic light, the intersection traffic lights, streetscape.
A note on the post office?
Yeah.
I hope we pull that out toward the traffic light. I mean, that is one thing that we pitched.
I agree.
As a need for the money.
Yep.
Because the money's already been appropriated for the light, we just need the infrastructure to support the light, so, yes.
I would hope that would be our number one project.
I think you got consensus from council on that.
Do you, are you talking about the protected left turn?
Yes.
That signal is currently sitting in Shelby, so it is there, and has been purchased, and is sitting in the district engineer's office.
I think we're also talking about, you know, AT&amp;T's agreed to put some of their lines underground, and Duke Energy has agreed to redirect some of their lines, and just paint up the whole intersection.
The line poles and...
Right.
May look nice.
You know, with consensus from you all, that allocation allows staff to then get with McGill, who's spearheading our streetscape project, and let them know that we have available capital to actually get the wheels moving. And then Ms. Stansworth will provide an update with about our park plan, streetscape, courtyard plan, and comprehensive land use plan in her manager's update.
Sounds good.
Excellent.
We don't get wheels, we get the wheels rolling.
Yes.
For sure.
Yeah. And I assume the fire department, that money is gonna be earmarked for their new fire station. Well, I've been to a meeting in some time, 'cause I don't know that they've had one, but that was the intent of asking for funds.
Didn't they already break ground for it?
No, not that I know of. They have a design.
They were asking for the money for us to build a new fire station.
Yes. Which is gonna cost a nickel more than the $1.25 million, but that's a good start.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, they have the ability to get their own loans and whatnot, so...
Yes. And fire, municipal fire, well, detached fire departments have the unique ability to adjust taxes as needed. So, their, their tax structure's a little bit different than ours as a town, so, and people don't typically call the fire department and say, "Hey, you don't raise my taxes." So...
Yeah, as we know.
You gotta hear that a lot.
We did that. We had to do that.
Yep.
And I think Chief Phillips is on the board, or the chairman of the board. Do you know if that's earmarked for that specific purpose?
No.
It's for the new building?
Yes.
My understanding is that they've got the funding pretty much secured. They're just waiting on this grant and then maybe design, but they've worked hard on it, and I know Nathan's with the fire chief many times to try to get that accomplished, so...
Chad's done a good job.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, the state is faster at dispersing funds than they are appropriating funds, but we will see.
We'll see.
You wanna step and talk about the density study? Yes. So, if we're good on the grant, I'm hanging around for one more thing, and it's the density study. I conducted a density study over the past month, and you've got that there, divided by municipal unit and county. This, I felt like was pertinent this month, because we did the conditional district. There is no pressure and/or will on my part for us to change our zoning designations, but I did want to give you all this just as a point of information. So, as you look on there, we are the most dense municipal unit in Cleveland and Rutherford County. I put Morganton on there, just so you could also see when you think about driving through Morganton. But when we're talking about number of people per acre, or per square mile, you can see that density on there. And just so we're thinking about what types of development we want to do, and how you all want to proceed if we're moving toward low-density, medium-density, or high-density development. Since we do not have a high-density development district, any high-density development will have to come to you as a conditional district. That doesn't bother me. I just wanted to point that out, and thought it was a good time to bring this up, since we just did a conditional district this evening. So, but I thought that was an interesting piece of information, so I wanted to share it with you guys.
Good information.
There is interest in growth and development, and it's not just from this one that we, there have been people that have been approaching the town to request higher density and different conditional uses, and so this is something that I think that we, as the council, are gonna have to... gonna have to wrestle with and keep in mind. So I appreciate you doing that.
I have at least two that I know are in the oven cooking now, that they're developing, are getting ready to come forward with a plan. And then there's one more who I've not spoken with directly yet, but he is also interested in a higher-density development than we allow. So that's why I kinda wanted to put this out there, so that it's on the horizon, which again, if you like the model where we build districts individually to suit, that's fine with me, it doesn't bother me a bit.
Well, I think one of the needs identified was affordable housing. So, you know, we've sort of gone away from single-family spacious lots to more dense, but also we need to keep in mind the affordability of it. So that's, we don't have enough affordable housing available in Cleveland County per se, either, so, and I don't know what the rest of the board's feeling is toward affordable housing, but that would be one avenue to look at when we're looking at density, is how affordable is it and how feasible is it?
I agree. I think it's, to me, it's top of my, one of the things top of my list is affordable housing, and, you know, so I think it's critical for the citizens, not, you know, that we provide affordable housing, but I think we're not, I think we're not acting responsibly. We don't, you know, at least address affordable housing. And that's a, somebody says, "Well, what's affordable?" That's kind of a shift in target, you know?
I saw on U.S. Newsweek, I think it was last week, they reported the national average went up from five years ago at two hundred and fifteen to three fifty as a starter home. That's crazy.
And I do know that Foothills Consortium, they're, you know, with their hood housing, and we've asked them to include us in some of their studies, and so I know they're really, really working on that and doing a good job, and so...
Ms. Allen and I both attended the, it's the Home Consortium program, and we both attended that this past week on Wednesday?
Wednesday.
So we both attended that and sat through that meeting and brought some notes back, so it's definitely something to discuss.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Last item for discussion is the grand marshal for the Christmas parade, which will be November twenty-sixth at 3:00 PM. We had a suggestion last month...
And like I said, I just wanted to mention that, it just popped into my head. I wouldn't by any means say that's who, what it needed to be, I just, who it needed to be.
I can respond to that if you'd like for me to go ahead with the director's report or the manager's report. So Tracy's gotten some notes for me to talk about, and she's gave me some, she's given me some options to throw out there, so if any of you would like any of these folks, but Mike had spoken with Jerry Hensley's wife, and she is not interested unless there are no other options, so I can certainly relate to that.
And no one heard that, didn't you, bro?
Some other options that Tracy came up with was Barbara, Fitch with the Y, Buddy and Frederick Hammrick, since they are the longest-standing business in Bulling Springs with Maxwell and Hammrick Insurance, Jake Wisniewicz with the Broad River Campground, he's received a couple of awards recently, and JT Scruggs, who is the nephew of Earl Scruggs, and who was also a planning council member for fourteen years. So if you would like for staff to reach out to any of those folks, we'd be happy to do so, or if you have other ideas.
Well, one of my ideas was Larry Thomas or Daniel's mom in some way. Daniel had a very moving tribute to him last time, and Larry was just one of those good people.
Okay.
So I don't know how we would do that, or if your mom would be interested in doing that, but if we could, that would be an idea or a suggestion from mine.
Okay.
This will be the first time I've probably participated in this. How does it, in the past, how's it just been just...
I think we just kinda suggest some ones.
Kinda come up with the consensus?
Yeah.
I mean, all these are good, you know?
Yeah, and nothing against any of the...
No, no, to me, that's the danger you get in, you know, saying, "Well, why didn't you pick this or that one?" It's not a, to me, it's not any way a popular contest or anything like that, and I hope whoever we picked, we would, you know, we would, somebody that we would all feel comfortable with. You know, if we want to emphasize a business, you know, then the Hammricks definitely have been here all the time. If we wanna do more of a citizen, then that definitely, Daniel, Larry, and his family, or, so it just kinda depends on, I think last time was him.
Mm-hmm.
Her longtime service, so...
I think if we're really, as we go through some of these capital improvement plans and are making noticeable changes to maybe some old-time traditions here in Bulling Springs, it'd be important to continue to raise up the local businesses, and having the Hammricks at the, as the grand marshals would really indicate that, hey, you guys still are on our mind and...
And maybe I might throw out not Buddy or Frederick, who are very good friends of mine, but maybe Teresa. Teresa is, she'd be the patriarch of that, of that family. She doesn't work much anymore, but she's the, she's probably the oldest patriarch of that, of that family, or all three, you know, but Teresa's, like I say, she's the oldest in the, which I can remember when OP Hammrick started Hammrick Insurance.
So maybe reach out to two or three and get one or two that are interested in...
And they're very strong supporters of the college, they're, you know, they're very charitable to the town, they're very supportive, they're always, you know, I'm sure that somebody goes in the door every day and says, "Can you, can you help me with this?" And very seldom do. Of course, Turner Trucking is the same, by the way.
Yeah.
You know, Turner Trucking, but if we're looking for old-established, older-established business, then like I say, Hammricks would be the oldest, probably the oldest since the Hammrick Mercantile has closed. It at one time was the oldest mercantile in Cleveland County, but...
I think Teresa would be a good choice.
I think Teresa would be a good choice.
A good choice.
I will definitely tell my mom the honor, but she likes to sit on the curb and get Santa Claus when he comes by, that she's gonna get, she can get out and come back.
You know, hopefully she won't chastise somebody throwing out candy.
Oh, she won't, oh, no, she'll chastise if you don't. She likes the old-school play.
You remember me?
I remember that last year. I remember that.
I've got chastised throwing out candy.
For sure.
I'm throwing out candy, by the way.
Oh, that's hilarious.
I'm throwing out candy, I don't care what you say.
All right, so we forget about...
Who said that?
The window box will be on and...
We didn't got that, that's right. All right, very good.
We'd ride right up to them, you know?
Okay, the next item on the manager's report is we have some good news that the LGC approved the debt for the land purchase today, actually, I think, so that's, that's good news. As Zach mentioned, I have an update that he so graciously typed up for me with the land use plan and the park master plan and the courtyard plan. For the land use plan, we held a community stakeholder engagement meeting on September twenty-sixth from 5:30 to 7:00. There are around twenty-five people in attendance. Staff received important thoughts and suggestions from members of the community, and they will be incorporated into the final draft of the comprehensive land use plan, and that will be ready for presentation, actually was ready for presentation tonight, so, correct? October board meeting? That's...
Planning board.
Planning board meeting. The park master plan is currently being developed, and the project engineers are drafting the plan that should be finished by the beginning of November. Staff will review the plan the week of November sixth, and the revision stage will take place beginning the week of November sixth and conclude with a presentation to the master plan steering committee during the week of November twentieth. The final plan should be ready to be presented to the planning board at their December meeting, and assuming this schedule holds, they plan on bringing the park master plan to this board for review at the January meeting, so something to look forward to. For the courtyard plan, McGill and Associates has reached out to staff and informed us that they're surveying, that the surveying period for the courtyard plan has concluded. The engineering team will begin to refine the current design and bring that to the council for final approval. There's a place marker for the Jerry Hensley statue, and the look and substance of that statue is still being reviewed by staff, and the initial estimate for that is fifty to sixty thousand dollars. If you have any questions, I'm gonna direct those to Zach.
I know initially we had some people that had expressed interest in helping to fund that, some interest in the community. Are you aware of those, or, okay?
Yes, and we, Rhonda, we're gonna have to figure out how that's gonna work.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on that?
The next item is Music on Main is on October fourteenth from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. That is the last one of the year. And then Foothills Regional Commission, my board had their meeting today at noon, and Councilman Green was there, and in that meeting, we went over our comprehensive economic development strategy, and he wanted me to share this with the board. This is something that we have to do every five years for the Economic Development Administration in order to, one, still be considered an economic development district, which Cleveland County is part of, and for us to get funding from EDA, so it's a pretty important document. This took about nine months to complete. The report that you can see is pretty comprehensive. We had to do an analysis, we've had to do a review, we've had to do community engagement surveys. There were twelve folks on the board that worked on this throughout the year, and this is the final product that we will be submitting to EDA for approval.
I'd like, can I speak to that?
Please.
No, I'd like to say I did attend the meeting day, and prior to that, I'd just like to say that, I was thinking back, you know, I've mentioned it at the meeting, that the first time I went to the meeting was prior to your coming, no one I might, might have went. We went to a meeting once prior to that, and I don't know if that was my first or second meeting, but the first time I went, I thought, man, this was not worth my drive up here, you know, for the meeting, which is, but since Dana has taken place there, it's like a different place. She's put together a great staff, they're all enthusiastic about what they do, it's just, it's very beneficial meeting, and I am glad I didn't say somebody else needs to be on that board, but it's, I think it's, they're definitely an asset to us and the community, and I think, I think she's doing, her and her staff are doing a great job, and I think we're gonna benefit greatly from their help in, like in the, but the other thing about this report is there's lots of good stuff in here, lots of stuff that maybe our staff could possibly use, so as I actually come home this afternoon and sit down and went through it in greater detail, so there's, it's a really good document, but I'd like to give a shout-out to her and the staff she's put together there, they're just doing a super job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
That's all.
I'm happy to see that in the packet, the strategies align very well with a lot of our overall goals.
Same thing, I thought the same thing when I looked, I thought, well, you know, that's...
Yep. And if you look at those counties that's involved, Cleveland County has a positive population growth, which is saying that we are in need of housing, we're in need of jobs, we're in need of these things, and here, we're talking about that, building our businesses and building communities that, and I think, Daniel, what was the term we coined a long time?
Respectful growth.
Respectful growth, right? We have to have an intentional idea of what we want to see happen and not just leave it to powers.
And the young man there from Economic Development Commission that used to work...
Brandon.
Brandon was there, and he said that he had just been just bombarded with developers for Cleveland County, and he actually mentioned Bulling Springs in his talk there, so...
So we might have had to work.
Prepare for that respectful growth.
For sure.
Seriously, because we may have to, had some hard lines there, it's hard to balance that, you know, we wanna grow, but you say, you can build here and you can't, so it's gonna be, it'd be a tough, it'd be a good problem to have, I think.
Yeah.
I think we're in a good position.
Councilman Green, you...
Well, let's see, I know I shared some of mine. I sent a couple of questions, you know, some time back, we, I think we approved, we signed a contract with a scooter company. I was saying Gardiner Webb, I think, and I just, from my understanding, that those things are gonna be in place by now, I've not seen any, or they, it's what's going on?
Bird, something.
Bird, was that it?
Bird scooters.
They are on order from Bird, they have not received them yet, so they are just, they're not...
I just could, you know, if that's something they had, but still, still, still a go.
It is on our list, I think it's adjusted left. It just, I think it says bird scooters.
Okay.
But yes, we've just not gotten anything from Bird yet about the scooters.
The other thing was the downtown Wi-Fi.
The contract has been, RFP has been awarded to Techworks, the material has been ordered, and based on an update we received today, it's anticipated that the Wi-Fi will be underway working by the end of this month, latest it would be the middle of November. There's going to be eleven locations instead of the initial thought of ten.
Wonderful.
Very good, very good. And the last thing I have is I attended the NPO meeting last week, and it's time for the NPO for our district to submit their projects to the state, and like last time, we do have a project on that list. It's the upgrading of 150 from the traffic light to, what's that, South Lafayette Street or whatever. It's going real well. The other twenty-six projects that we can submit, it's like, I forgot, I thought I picked up our sheet, but I picked up the wrong one, that actually had it on there, there's like twelve out of twenty-six, they have a scoring system that they use, and so, so we're still out there. But one thing that was even more encouraging to me was DOT can submit ten projects of themselves, which carries a little more weight than ours, and one of the projects they submitted, and I did pick it up, is not the entire project of widening, of upgrading 150, but upgrading three intersections of 150, of which one of them is Hillcrest Street, there's three of them, Hillcrest Street, the Patrick Avenue and 150, and the old Bulling Springs Road and 150. So to me, that kinda gives us two shots of getting something done, and I was really encouraged to see that, that they apparently recognize the need for those to be improved, especially Hillcrest, which is one of our fragments, so I'm really glad to see that. But they also, after they talk all this, what they're submitting, come back with, "But they ain't no money," or "There's gonna be very little money." They always temper that, but I did think us having the project, the NPO having the project, and DOT having the project, the partial project, that would be most beneficial to us, was a good sign, that if there is money, then maybe we'd have two shots at it, so it is another good meeting, so, that's all I got. I'm just excited for the state grant and all the things we got planned, and here's to me that the staff is just struggling along and checking those boxes off and doing a great job for us, I think, so I feel, I feel real good.
Thank you, sir.
So it's good to be first.
That's right. Councilman Edwards?
I gotta follow that. I just wanna give a thanks to Barbara for continuously improving on the reports that we're asking for from the YMCA contract, appreciate that. From what I heard with Justin, the revised contract was accepted and we're moving forward on what that progress looks like, so I, again, appreciate that. Speaking of the board, I know we have a board meeting for the YMCA next Tuesday, depending on Alastair family arrival, I probably won't be able to make it, but nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Bitt. Councilman Bitt?
I think it's been covered.
All right. Councilman Thomas?
I'm not going to ruin it by saying anything.
Well, I'm going to say some stuff, so... I mean, $750,000 grant, $200,000 grant for the courtyard, we are looking at respectful growth, and why not? We've got the Green Hill, which is just beautiful just down the road, we've got the YMCA, which is serving our community, just an amazing facility and community there. We're the only municipality, no disrespect to Cleveland Community College, they're a fantastic institution, but we're the only municipality in the county with a four-year university, fantastic university, serving the community, going out. I mean, that's an amazing thing, that clinic you talked about, and that's just wonderful stuff. Division One athletics, we have amazing schools and great teachers, I heard. The land around here is just beautiful, you know, we've got connectivity with the bypass that will at some point, one day, be completed, but we have developing culture with Christmas tree lighting and Music on Main and all these types of things, the amphitheater that's coming, I mean, just really amazing stuff. And as I always say, it's, it's the people, though, that make this place so wonderful to live in and grow in. Thank you all for coming tonight, and Mr. Green?
I picked up one of my notes, just information.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if you're aware or not, that we are going to be expanding the Medicaid in North Carolina decently first. They gave out some good information there, and I'd like to share with you what that would mean to Cleveland County. It would mean 386 new jobs, and $374,000 would come into Cleveland County, which, you know, will be shared. But to me, the best, the best thing is there'd be 6,439 new Medicaid people, people that will get service that, that really, really, really need, so I thought that was, that was good news.
All right, do you have much to add?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Always say aye. Good evening, everybody. Sorry.
They may like, they may like the stuff. I got to, they may like it.
I did, no.
There's some good stuff in there, really.
That's fun, y'all on a spot.
So you've got fire department.
I mean, they, Roland said they got...
All right, we'll see.
They got another 1.2.
Good to see you. Thank you.
I meant to ask you, was it your, okay, it's a purpose?
I thought maybe y'all might like, cover version for that, there's a lot of good stuff in there. I'm going to go ahead and chastise them. Hold up, hold up, chaps.
No, not Indiana.
It is the MOU for...
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, I know it really well.